I now reconvene the regular meeting of Board of Education at 6:00 PM with Bridge, Cruz, Monroe, Na and Shaw present. Before we begin, please silence all electronics devices and note that these proceedings are being recorded. Good afternoon, everybody. And Pat?
The Board met in closed session from 5:00 PM to 5:38 regarding a student readmission matter, student discipline matters, conference with labor negotiators ACT and CSCA, public employee appointment coordinator, secondary curriculum and instruction, elementary school assistant principal and chief technology officer, and public employee discipline dismissal release. The Board took the following action: appointed Andrew Black as Chief Technology Officer effective February 3rd, 2023 by unanimous vote of 5-0 with Bridge, Cruz, Monroe, Na and Shaw voting yes, and appointed Lisa Thompson as Assistant Principal of Michael Wickman Elementary School, effective date to be determined by unanimous vote of 5-0 with Bridge, Cruz, Monroe, Na and Shaw voting yes. No further action was taken, which requires public disclosure.
Thank you, Pat. And now we're on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to have leading the Pledge of Allegiance, Misty, on behalf of Kennedy tonight. Please stand.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're now on to item 1C, this evening's only presentation item. Dr. Enfield?
Yeah, tonight I've asked Mr. Graves to do a presentation for the Calero because the opening of a new school, the Louis W. Moreno School, that we're going to have to go and change the boundary just for the Preserve Area Academy residents. So tonight he's going to give a presentation to kind of go over the process and what we're hoping to accomplish with that boundary change.
Good evening, President Shaw, Board members, Dr. Enfield Cabinet and community. So as Dr. Enfield said, tonight's presentation is on the boundary process and timeline for Calero Preserve Academy and Louis W. Moreno School, which is currently under construction. The current boundary for Calero is outlined in green there. And basically, it is, well, there's a school with a red dot, and it is bordered on the east, or I'm sorry, on the west by Euclid Avenue, on the north by Merrill Avenue, on the east by Hellman and Carpenter Avenues, on the south by Chino Corona Road. And there with the second red dot is the location of Louis Moreno School. The blue line there indicates Kimball Avenue. And for the most part, everything south of Kimball Avenue is residential, north of Kimball Avenue is the Chino Airport and commercial developments. Pine Avenue basically cuts the remaining two-thirds of that boundary in half, pretty much, almost half and half. But currently the majority of the residential development is on the north side of Pine. There is some on the south side of Pine, which is also known as Homecoming Apartments. And then there's some townhomes and smaller homes south of Homecoming. So the timeline, in October 2022, we began construction on the new school. In November of '22, the Board approved contracts with Davis Demographics for student population forecast, demographics, and boundary consultation services. In December of 2022, the district released a boundary application for interested Calero and Preserve Area community members and posted it on the district and Calero websites, and it was also issued to the Chino Champion for publication. At the last board meeting in January, the Board approved a contract with Eric Hall and Associates for boundary consultation services. This past Tuesday, January 31st, the boundary application window closed. And then a little over a year from now, the school will open in July of 2024. So we received a number of applications from interested community members, a total of 11. And basically, we're going to proceed with all 11 community members that expressed interest. They cover the qualifications that we were looking for, live in the Calero Preserve community, and/or have a student that attends Calero. So the committee will be made up of the principal, current principal of Calero, Lori Warner, Amber Ortell Parks, who is Calero's Assistant Principal, she's also a parent of a student there and lives in the Preserve community, Jennifer Malixey, she is a teacher at Calero, but she is also a parent and Preserve Community resident, and then the community members that expressed interest, Alexander Ariola, Van Neil Borders, David Camacho, Erica Cavaney, and Sarah McLarty, Jamie Paredes, or Jaime, Carl Huang, Marie Sanders, and Larry Wu. This next slide shows the location of Calero in the yellow circle, the location of the new school there at the bottom in the yellow circle. And then all of the applications that we received are sprinkled throughout that entire boundary showing the red dot. So we got pretty good coverage from the entire community. District staff and consultants for the committee will be Leah Fellows, our Assistant Superintendent of CIIS, myself, Sandra Chan, Associate Superintendent of Business, Beverly Beamer, our Director of Planning, and then E. Saljoya and David Kates from Davis Demographics, and Bob Nicholson and Kari Knowles from Eric Hall and Associates. So objectives that we need to consider. The key objectives are to reduce enrollment of Calero Preserve Academy to a manageable level. Currently, on a daily basis, they have about 1,354 students on campus, which is larger than our smallest, which is larger than our smallest high school. Their total enrollment is 1,691 students. Second objective is to remove half of the 20 portable classrooms that were placed there to accommodate the growth, and then reclaim the lost playground space. We also need to balance enrollments of both schools based on the school capacity, but still keep room for growth. And then lastly, maintain educational parity between both schools, which will also ensure financial efficiency and feasibility. We don't want to open a school that only has 150 students, but yet we have to fully staff it for all those, and that's not financially efficient. So we've determined a meeting approval schedule. So we will have a number of meetings. The Boundary Committee meetings will be held on February 22nd, March 8th, March 22nd, April 12th, and April 26th. And then sprinkled in between those dates, we will have community information meetings at Calero on March 14th and 15th at 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM both days, and then again on April 4th and 5th at 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM on both days. From April 13th to the 21st, a survey will be sent to Calero Preserve Academy parents. And then on May 4th, the May 4th Board meeting will present an information item to the Board, followed the following meeting on May 18th for an action item for the Board to determine what the boundaries will be based on the recommendations of our consultants and the community. And with that, any questions?
Just another one I just wanted to share with the community. We're looking at the Calero boundary and having to change, create a new boundary to capture the residents for the new school, the Louis W. Moreno School. But I also want the community to know that the two schools will still go to Chino Hills High School. So I don't want the community to think that the new school is going to go to a different high school. So everybody that lives in the current Preserve area will continue to go to Chino Hills High School. So I just wanted to cover that.
Thank you. Cruz?
At the same time, Eastvale, Diamond Bar, Pomona, they should be welcomed to go to our school.
Dr. Enfield?
Right, if there's room, we should welcome everybody that would love to go to the school.
Well, for those two schools, we may not be able to. Because at Calero, remember, it's pretty impacted right now. And part of the charge for that committee is to reduce the number of students on that campus, to bring it down significantly, so it's not overpacked and overcrowded at that school site. So the committee needs to do that. And if you're allowing transfers into that, it defeats that purpose. And we've had Calero closed off for transfers for a while. Just as we, I know we've had roads, but I don't recall if we've allowed that one open. So when our schools get too impacted, we hold them, we freeze any transfers in. So we'll have to take a look at that.
Thank you. I just have one comment. I like that there's a committee involving the community. I think that really helps. And I like the public meetings that are going to be happening. And I'll make sure that we reach out to our city liaisons to possibly even have them there, because I know they get a lot of questions and concerns from the city in regards to the school.
Sure.
But thank you for doing this.
You're absolutely welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't see the light until right now. You sure? Okay. We would be on now to comments from our student rep, but she is at a water polo game, so we're wishing her and her teammates good luck. We miss her tonight. And then we're now up for comments from employee representatives. We have Brenda Walker from ACT. No comments? Thank you. We have Danny Hernandez from CSCA.
Good evening, President Shaw, Board members, Dr. Enfield Cabinet and community. I just wanted to make a few brief announcements. CSCA's contract survey is currently live for members to submit their wish for what we negotiated in our contracts. It will be open until, excuse me, February 28th. So the link is in our newsletter. We wanted to also share that on April 6th, excuse me, 4th through the 6th, CSCA State will be having a parent educator conference. The district typically sends about 10. I just wanted to remind members to let us know that of your interest in going. I did want to share also that soon we'll be having our job shadowing. Our job shadowing is for the Board members to shadow a classified member during their day. Sometimes we get so used to what maybe some others do about maybe simply just pushing a button. That's all they do. They just stand there. We have a few of our gentlemen out there that have to wear a vest all day. Mr. Monroe, you're probably pretty aware of that. It's not so easy. Not that I do it, but I hear from them, their concerns. If you look at our officers, our Chino PD and our security, there's, from the general public, it might look like they're very similar. But we have security at our campuses and we have patrol. So maybe in the coming weeks, or when we do actually have our job shadowing, I know Mr. Cruz and Mr. Na and Mr. Bridge, you guys have all participated in it. Ms. Shaw, we'd love to have you shadow some of our members. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Barbara Bearden from CHAMP.
I made sure it loaded right this time.
All right. Good evening, President Shaw, School Board members, Dr. Enfield Cabinet and Chino Valley community. First, I want to congratulate, I might get emotional, Lisa Thompson as the new AP Wickman. I have seen her grow and develop as a leader, so I'm very excited about her. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Hidden Trails Elementary for their recognition as a California distinguished school. Mrs. Sura, Mr. Lee, and the teachers are doing some incredible things at Hidden Trails. I know, Mrs. Shaw, when you go visit them, you're going to see it all. It's going to be exciting for you. Secondly, I'd like to, or third, I'd like to thank our amazing Health Services Department for their support while CBSD Elementary Schools work to implement the ELOP plans at our school sites. The time that Mrs. Fellows, Dr. Gomez, Dr. Ashby, and Mrs. Hart took to support us in understanding the purpose of the monies and the development of our plans made the process a little less stressful. I know our students are going to benefit from the supports and these opportunities. That is all I have for tonight. I hope you all have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are now on to comments from the audience on agendas not, items not on the agenda. Pat, are there any requests to speak on non-agenda items?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Thirteen, yes.
Speakers will be called in the order the request was received. Please listen for your name and be prepared to approach the podium. Any comments on agenda items will be accepted during consideration on that item. Once the Board has commenced all deliberations on an issue, speaker cards will not be accepted. The Board is very interested in your comments, but please bear in mind that the Board typically does not respond to comments during this time on the agenda, as it's reserved specifically for public comments. Individual members may respond during Board comments at the end. Additionally, the Board does its best to support the public's right to address the selective officials. It is also important the Board conduct its business in an orderly and fair fashion, as provided in Board Bylaw 9323. In the event that an unusual amount of speaker cards is submitted for an item, the Board will hold up to 30 minutes of the comments. In the case of non-agenda items, the Board can, if chooses, hear the remainder of the comments after the business has been conducted. Further, this bylaw states that in part, individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the Board. A speaker may not use the podium for purposes other than addressing the Board directly. If there are no further comments, a speaker will be considered to have relinquished his or his allotted three minutes. This means that the speakers cannot donate their time to another speaker, which in effect can give a speaker more than three minutes. The exception is when non-English speakers require a translator. Mr. Cruz, will you please explain the light system?
Speakers, you have three minutes to address the Board. Librarian marks to new points. Begin comments at the green light. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. The red light means your time is over. Please adjust the microphone as necessary. Please refrain from making comments while speakers are at the podium. And also, please note that the Board Policy 1312.1 outlines the procedure for anyone who wishes to file a complaint against a district employee.
The first speaker is Clara Luden, followed by Ellie Luden, followed by Jane Luden.
Ni hao, weshi Clara. My sisters and I are kindergarten, kindergarten students at Hidden Trails. And we are part of the DLI Mandarin program. We wanted to thank the school board and the district for supporting this program so we can grow into productive and global citizens. Thank you.
Oh my gosh, thank you. Ellie Luden?
Ni hao. Ni hao, weshi Ellie. We love learning Mandarin. But it's a challenge for half-day kindergarten. We would like to request all-day kindergarten next year. Thank you for, for you, thank you for your time.
Jane Luden?
Ni hao, weshi Jane. Thank you for supporting our program. Our little brother is going to be in TK next year. He wants to learn Mandarin too. We would like to, the sooner you start learning a language, the more you know it. Please add TK to our DLI program next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank all of you guys for your time.
Daphne Duran, followed by Waverly Fu, followed by Kenneth Zhao.
Good evening, Board. I just came to introduce myself. I'm a new field representative for Assembly Member Freddie Rodriguez, and I am representing Chino and Upland. So any assistance you may need, please feel free to contact our office, to contact me directly. I'll leave business cards for everyone. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for coming tonight.
Waverly, followed by Kenneth Zhao, followed by Jennifer Zhao.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Waverly Fu. I am the counsel for the, who represent a student in your flyer that got his suspension record expunged from the district. With my client's full authority and some other concerned parents tonight, we are here to share with you our stories and struggles during this very difficult process. California law requires the district to start investigations and to offer the final decisions in 30 days upon receiving the student's request for, to challenge the record. That, of course, did not happen to us in our case. So I made several phone calls to the district's Student Service Support Department, and I made, I wrote seven letters and emails, no result. So I personally met its director, Ms. Stephanie Johnson, to discuss the matter. And of course, she refused to answer all questions, she abruptly terminated the meetings, and literally kicked all of us out of the room. So what did we do? We contacted Mr. James Na, our longtime entrusted and respected member. And thanks to his strong leadership, we quickly met our superintendent, Dr. Norm Field, who reviewed the documents, who did his due diligence very quickly, and made the right call and expunged the record. We thank for his leadership, too. We're very happy, everybody, because we thought the matter was resolved. It was not. Very quickly after the meeting, we received a letter from the district Risk Management and the Human Resource Department alleging two of the men's student supporters are being aggressive and dangerous. And therefore, if they ever show up in district meetings to support the student, they will be called in the police and they will be put in the county jail. And ladies and gentlemen, and this is a letter from our district Risk Management and Human Resource Department, initiated by the Ms. Johnson. I am absolutely outraged and saddened by this letter. This is outrageous, because this is a talisman efforts to silence our students and our parents, when all they want to do is just express their concerns with the district. And this is also the violation of the First Amendment rights. Here in the US, the fundamental constitutional rights, freedom of speech, still matters to us. And no district employees is allowed to take that right from the parents, just because they want to talk to the district. I am also deeply saddened, because this letter demonstrates the quality and incompetency of our certain management employees in our district. They're trusted with the mission to support and serve our students and parents, but this letter shows otherwise. So here tonight, we demand our district to implement more policies, to train and to audit the employees, so they know how to do their job better, and they will know they will be held accountable for any intentional misconduct, just like this letter. Tonight, we demand a change and a reform from this district, so it can serve our students, our parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenneth Zhao, followed by Jennifer Zhao, followed by Steve A.
Oh, I came first. My husband will follow me. Hi, everyone. My name is Jennifer Zhao. I'm the pastor of Shanghai Vineyard, we're also known as City on the Hill Christian Church in Chino. We have been residents of Chino Hill for almost five years, for seven years now. And so thank you for this opportunity to speak and bring up my request to the school board members and the superintendent. So let me first introduce myself by saying that my husband and I love our community, and we try to be a responsible citizen to contribute in however ways that we can. For example, during the outbreak of COVID-19 in March and April of 2020, I raised about $20,000 to buy PPE for hospitals. During those times when everyone is afraid to go out, I look for vendors to buy surgical facial masks, facial shields and protective clothes, and deliver personally to many hospitals, including Pomona Valley and Ontario Kaiser. And during the Chino Hill fire in December of 2020, we also raised money, mostly from the Ayala Chinese parents, to buy the most expensive ice cream from the markets. And then we bring it to all the fire departments in Chino and Chino Hills. So as a small church, about maybe 10 to 20 families, it's a very small church, but we do what we can to bless our communities. We have food ministries. My husband, who's a timemaker, he's a computer programmer, he works full-time job, but every Friday he goes on our guest menu to Santa Ana, to different places, to the food bank to bring food. And then Saturday, we have volunteer students to deliver, provide food for 50 to 70 families on a weekly basis. And so most of all, as a pastor, I try to care for the new Chinese immigrants' families. I started social media groups for Cannon Hill High School, Ayala, Chino Hill High School, and I would often translate and deliver messages from your, you know, school district, from schools, principals, to the Chinese family that may not, you know, speak and read English. So many parents will often text me, call me about school problems, issues, and I always like accompanying them, you know, I try to solve problems for them when I, whenever I can. So last year, San Bernardino County gave me an award for being a multilingual volunteer, something like that. So by doing something good is my way to serve God and to show my care for our community. But unfortunately that I'm here tonight attending the school board meeting to defend my reputation, because I have recently been falsely accused. Please hear my report of misuse of power in our school district by the Student Support Services Department and the Risk Management and HR Department. In the process of helping a high school student and his parents, on Friday, January 13th, when I have the meeting here with Dr. Park and Superintendent, I received an email threat of fine and imprisonment of up to six months from the Director of Risk Management and HR Department. In this email that was sent to me, Ms. Fields was addressing to both my husband and myself, saying that the school values safety and that they were employees from the Student Support Services who had made complaints about my husband and my behavior during the hearing.
The next speaker is Kenneth Zhao, followed by Steve A, followed by Barbara Hale.
Now, honorable school board of directors, I want to let you know that in our churches' prayer meeting, we have been praying for you guys. I'm a Christian, I'm a pastor, my name is Ken Zhao. I served as a missionary and also the founder of the church, two churches, both in another country and in this country. Apostle Paul wrote in Rome- Apostle Paul wrote in Romans thirteen that we need to respect authority vested in the various government levels, including the school districts because all authorities are from God. In turn, the governments are, as servants of God, will protect and serve the people and be accountable to the Lord Almighty. People who govern, uh, govern, govern, governs are mortals. And we are suspect, suspect, suspectable to make mistakes and cause failures. Therefore, because the government wields some tremendous power and resources, which can cause severe damages, it needs to be checked and watched in a democratic society. I want to let you know that we have personally experienced the abuse of the power by the Chino Valley School District employee. Some of the officials arbitrarily made up rules to do things beyond their mandate and then later tried to cover up their wrongdoings. The people will bear a false witness to have the HR and Risk Management Department to issue some both illegal and unconstitutional threat against us for helping a student and tarnish our reputation. I was barred from entering the school district property because I was accused of interrupting the meeting with disruptive behavior and calling people's names. The truth is that when confronted with the facts, the director of the Student Support Department abruptly stopped the meeting to prevent the unfavorable statements from entering into the meeting minutes and ushered us all out in fifty minutes. We are dumbfounded and angered by this brazenly behavior, which shows no respect to the student and parents' rights. I have seen this behavior in another oppressive regime. I don't want to name the name here. But I thank Mr. James Knob, who invited me to come to this district anytime without worry. So I come today. And I want to let you know, we tried to reach out to the HR Department. Four days later, they gave us a, uh, answer, saying, your request to meeting was rejected. They bear the fit, a false witness against us, slander my name, and then I don't have a chance to clear my name. So I want you guys to do something in this district to help the minorities to give us a chance to talk to this, uh, different levels of the district so that we don't repeat the same mistake that I'm suffering. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve A, followed by Barbara Hale, followed by Misty.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm here to talk about an administrative assault that I was, that had occurred. I have a pre-written statement that I'm going to read from. This letter is concerning a recent situation that deals with the threat and physical intimidation assault by a Chino Valley Assistant Principal, Aniamu Anawanu at Townsend Junior High. My name is Steve Austin. I'm the father to a daughter named Aubrey Austin, who is currently in eighth grader at Townsend Junior High. For the past month, my daughter has been the victim of online bullying, abuse, harassment, which included physical threats, violence, and campus harassment, bullying, and threats of violence. Although the campus said that they had the situation under control and were monitoring it, this is where my complaint begins. After receiving a very distressing call from my daughter who was in tears and so emotional that I could barely make out her words from getting attacked and sucker punched from behind, I immediately raced to the school to pick my daughter up and ensure her safety. I knew that I wanted to talk to the principal to find out how this could have possibly happened when they told me they were handling this situation and monitoring it daily. The minute I walked into the school office, I saw people sitting on the waiting couch. Being that my daughter was just attacked, I figured that this was the attacker's mother. As I was going to introduce myself to her, one of the office staff asked me to step back into the vice principal's office, which I did, leaving my other daughter back in the waiting room. As I entered the VP's office, they closed the door behind me. I reopened the door, admitted, and admittedly was upset, saying, please don't leave, please don't close the door. My other daughter's out there. In reality, I wanted to make sure that I knew my other daughter was going to be safe when the office was filled with people that were involved in this situation. Sure enough, just as I was walking to take my seat in the vice principal's office, I hear noises and yells coming from the waiting room. I immediately ran to the door to see what was going on. And as I look out into the waiting room, I see a very large gentleman, larger than myself, Mr. Anianu, Anianu. Sorry about his name. I have a hard time pronouncing it. Manhandling my daughter and grabbing her by not only her hair and her, by her hair and her sweatshirt. My immediate reaction is, oh no, this girl, this is the girl's dad and he is now attacking my daughter. I see a man wearing plain clothes, nothing showing me he's an administrator, staff, or a teacher. So I immediately run from the VP's office with my wife and vice principal in tow. I grabbed the man from behind in a, in a hugging motion to pull him off my daughter. At no point, at no time did he ever announce himself or tell me who he was. As soon as I grabbed him, he fired up, turned on me, and pushed me back. Once we were both standing, he proceeded to approach me with his head on my head very aggressively in manner and standing in a fighting posture. He was breathing extremely heavy and came in with a headbutt style motion, knocking my head off while proceeding to push his forehead against my forehead with a pretty strong force for at least forty-five to sixty seconds. This entire time, I had not raised my hands, my posture, or my voice. In fact, I didn't really say anything at all. I stood in stoic silence, still not knowing who he was. I don't think this man had, and his, with, with his size or stature should be grabbing minors in the fashion like my wife and I witnessed yesterday, especially not a female minor. I believe this man is a threat to the kids after what I witnessed yesterday. I feel he should have a full mental and psychological evaluation, and I do not fit, do not see he is fit to be around uh, children at this age. He's a serious liability to the school, the school district, and the children. This is a kid, this is the age where kids rebel and challenge authority. And this man's attitude is not cut out to deal with these type of crisis situations. How he turned on me and went after me is completely unconscionable. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Barbara Hale, followed by Misty, followed by Carla Van de Steeck.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Barbara Hale and I'm the Executive Director of Sycamore Academy. I'm here tonight to continue the discussion regarding the overallocation fee that CVSD is charging Sycamore. Mr. Marabado made a request of you during a board meeting a few weeks ago. I followed up that request in writing. President Shaw called me last week to inform me that the board met with its legal counsel and agreed to modify the payment schedule, but was advised that they cannot alter the total amount due. I'm not sure the basis that your attorney provided, so I'm here to tell you that he's wrong, and I'm going to explain why. You see, I too serve as an elected official. And in that role, nothing chaps my hide more than someone telling me that our board doesn't have authority that is clearly outlined in the law. So now not only am I fighting for my students, but I'm fighting for this board. I want to explain that the overallocation fee identified in Prop thirty-nine facilities legislation was enacted in two thousand. The first time an overallocation fee was assessed was in two thousand nineteen in Los Angeles. It's not that overallocation had not occurred, and that is proven by Los Angeles itself. When they first assessed the fees on forty-one charter schools in two thousand nineteen, they also attempted to assess fees for prior year overallocations. This attempt proves that overallocation had occurred, but no fees had been assessed. LA was not penalized or otherwise reprimanded for not assessing these fees in the prior years. To date, I can list all the districts that have assessed overallocation fees. That would be LAUSD and Chino. Though, that, this alone proves that you are not required to assess the fees, but let's dig a little bit deeper. It clearly is stated in Title V, Section one one nine six point eight, quoting, "The school district may, at its sole discretion, reduce the amounts owed by a charter school." End quote. I know that your attorney, Mr. Chidester, has repeatedly stated that ed code requires you to assess this fee. I disagree, but let's say that that is true. What is also true is that Title V, Section one one nine six nine point eight allows you to reduce the fee and puts no limit on how much you can reduce that fee. So circling back to my prior statement about things that chaps my hide, CCR five, CCR Title V, Section one one nine six nine point eight explains overallocation fees and the authority of this board. You absolutely have sole discretion. This board has the authority to stop taking money away from our students. It is one hundred percent your choice. Mr. Chidester should have advised you that according to our current agreement, page four, item seven, you need to take action to modify our agreement. I am asking this board to put a resolution on the next agenda. My preference would be a resolution to reduce the Sycamore overallocation fee down to the amount paid to date. An eighty-five thousand dollar fine for not meeting an enrollment projection sounds far more reasonable than a two hundred and forty-five thousand dollar fine. Alternatively, if this board insists on taking the full two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from Sycamore students, please adopt a resolution modifying the payment schedule as offered. My board would then have to adopt the res-
The next speaker is Misty, followed by Carla Van de Steeck, followed by Candida Echeverria. Thank you.
Good evening. I was speaking with my cousin the, about a month ago or so. Um, she has a son who was Oliver, who is now Olivia. She also has a special needs daughter. So we got to talking for a couple hours and some of the things that we were discussing really started bothering me. We are constantly bombarded in our society on the news, social media, and lately in our schools and school board meetings about LGBTQ rights. And frankly, I'm a little bit over it. Did you know that special needs kids make up about twenty percent of the students in the school district? Twenty percent. LGBTQ? I'm going to go high and I'm going to say about five. We have been told, um, that there's insurances for the teachers for the LGBTQ community. That they are, um, wanting curriculum for inclusivity, empathy. They want to, um, use the bathrooms that they identify with. And teachers are now hanging flags in their room so that students know it's a safe place. So tonight, I am here to speak up for special needs kids like my daughter. They are the ones that need the world standing up for them and advocating for their rights. They don't get to speak up, um, they don't get to choose which disability they've been given. They are the ones that are truly ignored, forgotten, bullied, and excluded. With that said, I am calling for the absolution of all special ed classes in the district. I want my daughter included in regular ed classes. I want this flag hung up in all classrooms so that my daughter knows that she's safe. I want these books used on Rett Syndrome handbook to teach all the teachers how to deal with special needs, Rett Syndrome. You can even put up flags for Down Syndrome, autistic. It's time that we look at the, the greater amount and that some of these people that think that they don't have rights start looking and stop being so selfish and realizing how truly blessed they are that they can speak, attend school, and be in a regular ed class. Oh, and I would like bathrooms to have a large table with a lift.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Carla Van de Steeck, followed by Candida Echeverria, followed by Leslie Fur.
Hi, I'm speaking tonight for my dad, Al Van de Steeck. He couldn't be here. He's at our food bank where I've come from. That's why I look like this. Um, he wanted me to reiterate that the naming of, this is in regards to the new Preserve School. The naming school, naming a school after a person is a mistake. In today's society, people's names are being removed from schools and public buildings. A thorough background check should be done prior to selecting a name to prevent embarrassment in the future. So just to consider that with the naming of the school.
Thank you.
Candida Echeverria, followed by Leslie Fur, followed by Caitlin Martinez.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Candida Echeverria. I'm a longtime Chino resident as well as a Chino High, uh, school graduate in nineteen eighty-six. And I'm here, uh, one, I love the new campus. I think it's beautiful. I did have a lot of fond memories of the old campus, but the new one is, I'm sure, very needed and beautiful. Uh, with that, I was a basketball and volleyball player and spent a lot of time in the old gym and very much, uh, know that how much hard work and dedication comes from both the athletes and the volunteer and the paid parents as, I mean, coaches and who spend all the time nurturing the student athletes. And, um, at the old gym, uh, I know there was a couple of coaches that have spent, spent many years coaching at Chino High School and did a lot of good, um, Frank Elder and Joe Murillo. And I know with the new gym, uh, I think it'd be nice to have their names prominently demonstrated or shown somewhere to honor their history with the school and their success with the programs. So that is what I'd like to hope that the board will consider, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Leslie Fur, followed by Caitlin Martinez.
Good evening. I'm the mother of those exceptional triplets that you heard from earlier. And they are part of the inaugural Mandarin DLI program at Hidden Trails. And we just wanted to come and thank the board and the school district for investing in such a fantastic program. We are going to help these students become truly global, bicultural, biliterate students, and that is awesome. Um, I will say, it has been a little bit like we are building the airplane while it is flying in the air. Um, and the district, uh, has been doing a tremendous job, but we wanted to come and share some suggestions that will greatly improve this program. The first of which is offering this program as all-day kindergarten. So I would encourage the board and the district to, um, start talking to the teachers' union. Um, every surrounding district that borders ours has already solved the issue of, they have at least an option for all-day kindergarten. It may not be universal in their districts, but they do at least have that option. So it is a solvable problem. Uh, we have very limited instructional minutes in half-day kindergarten. And so, and we're running a ninety-ten model, which means that ninety percent of those instructional minutes are taught in Mandarin. And only ten percent of the minutes are dedicated to English instruction. This is the model that is shown in research to deliver the best outcomes. However, it is incredibly challenging to accomplish in a half-day setting. So expanding the program to all-day would be a tremendous help. Additionally, neuroplasticity is what helps kids learn language. The sooner you start, the better. We should follow the model of Pasadena and Ontario Montclair, and we should expand this program to TK immediately. Selfishly, as they said, they have a little brother who already wants to learn Mandarin. He will be in TK next year. The school has the room to do it. It will increase the visibility of this program and it will incre- incredibly, um, increase the success of our outcomes. We're going to make this program into a destination program in our destination district. Um, and I would, you, I would invite you all to come and see what is happening at Hidden Trails because it is fantastic. So thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you.
Caitlin Martinez.
Good evening, Board. You're on it, Cruz. Good job. So we see so many parents out here frustrated with failed, um, employees and people that you guys put in charge. And it's, you guys get the hot seat. You guys on the sides are just as much to blame. You guys have been in place for a lot longer. Park, I haven't seen you drop the pollen so many things right out. You've had your hands tied to so many things too. And you guys don't ever take the heat. You guys do unfortunately. And it's time that that changed. So we're going to start digging. We've already said you are, you were behind here. Roles were reversed a couple of years ago when we told you, infield, that we will take seats, and that's what we did. Things have shifted and you know that. We have people behind us that are frustrated with people that are in roles there to protect our kids. And once again, it doesn't happen. And we have principals abusing authority. Now, we have McReynolds over sped. She's a director of her sped. She was lost, for all the parents that don't know. Um, she was a principal for another high school in another district. She lost her job over, um, I believe abuse, sex abuse allegations, not allegations, there's a lawsuit, two point eight million dollars she was tied to. And when she lost her job, we hired her to go over and see our most vulnerable kids. So that is who we are hiring. And I know you as the board aren't, aren't the ones in charge of that, but we need to do better. Because as you can see between all these people, between Ayala and Townsend and McReynolds, we are, we are failing our kids. Um, for me, for my son, I, I pulled him from our schools. Um, he has Down Syndrome and I can't risk him. He's not verbal enough. He came home with too many bruises on his arms with aids that weren't properly vetted. And that falls on you guys, you too. You guys are in a position to protect our kids. Do you guys actually like kids or are you just here for a paycheck? Because if you are, you need to have a moral check. We've got to do better. Our kids deserve it because they are our future. And if you guys won't stand up, we will take seats. We've done it already. You guys have saw that. The board has shifted. Bridge, you're an odd man out up there now. We will continue to take seats until you guys stand up. And if you're not a seat that's elected, we will make sure that your employment is in jeopardy. We will do that. If that's a class action lawsuit or whatever, but we are fed up. I pay taxes and I can't even put my kids in the- I pay taxes and I can't even put my kids in the school district anymore because I don't trust you guys. Something very wrong with that, and I'm not the only one. About 80% of the seats behind me are filled with very frustrated parents because you guys continue to drop the ball. We've got to do better. For our sped department, McReynolds? Are you kidding me? We're having over the most vulnerable kids and she's tied to what? She got fired and we hired her? There's something wrong with that. All of this, there's something wrong with that, and we can do better. We need to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Thank you. Okay, we're now on to item 1G. On changes and deletions. Pat, are there any changes or deletions?
The following changes are on the agenda. Item 2A1, page 3 on the index. Correct reference S E L P to read S E L P A. Item 3D2, Contract Consultant Services, page 71. Under Approved Contracts to be amended. Under Amendment for the portion that reads Extend Contract through June 30th, 2023. Amended to read Extend Contract through May 31st, 2023. There are no further changes or deletions.
Thank you, Pat. We are now on to action items. And our only action item tonight is item 1A1, 2A1. And that's opposing a moratorium on the new single district SLPAs by two years from June 30th, 2024 to June 30th, 2026. Board President Sonia Shaw recommends the Board of Education direct the superintendent to send a letter to Governor Gavin Newsom and other associated decision-making bodies opposing the extension of the moratorium on a new single district SLPAs by two years from June 30th, 2024 to June 30th, 2026. Pat, are there any speakers?
We have five speakers. The first speaker is Daris Deguzman, followed by Jim Gallagher, followed by Kathy Gallagher.
Good evening, Board President Shaw, Board members, Cabinet and community. As a special ed parent, I want to express my support for the action item on today's agenda and encourage not only our board, but our entire community to send a letter to the governor, legislators, and state legislators to end the moratorium on single district SLPAs. It's time we reevaluate our relationship with West End SLPA and hold the accountability and financial responsibility locally. Too often, I've heard of painful stories, not just my own, but from other parents who have fought and battled with our district. Our district, who is backed and supported by lawyers and attorneys incentivized by SLPA. These aren't just current occurrences and experiences, but years of a broken system. These stories are from parents that don't have the financial ability to hire lawyers like SLPA. When you have a child with a disability, more often than not, you have one parent that has to stay home and you're living on one single income. These are parents that only want the services and support to help their children thrive and succeed. While the district continues to refuse, deny, and battle parents, the one who suffers the most are the students. Every delay that we get is time we can't get back to help our kids succeed. It's time for a change to this broken system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jim Gallagher, followed by Kathy Gallagher, followed by Courtney Bogel.
Thank you. Good evening, board, Dr. Enfield's staff, and fellow residents. I'm here also to comment on this moratorium, the opposition moratorium on new single district SLPAs, a letter that you would like to write. And I'm speaking for a secondary special ed teacher who asked me to read this. She presents positives and negatives about this. So the positives of becoming our own SLPA is that we would reclaim most of the students in county classes as well as some of the students in the non-public schools, which could save us a lot of money since we will have our programs in-house. As part of that, in regards to non-public school students, we wouldn't have to interface with the West End SLPA as basically a third party, so to speak, to have kids who need to travel back and forth to that. We might be able to manage or deal with some of our more challenging, high-profile cases better in some aspects. Now, the downside, she said, is that without that consortium, that's the West End SLPA, as a neutral group, we won't have the resources to deal with some of our most difficult cases. And while we can create our own programs, 100% of the responsibility for the district to have classes for all students, including low incidence, such as our deaf and hard-of-hearing students, for example, means we would have to have entire teams and specialists for elementary, middle, and high school ASL classes, for example. So we also need our own specialized audiology center. It would cause a major expansion of the Special Education Department. This office is supposed to relocate to the new building, by the way. But we would need more space for other specialties, such as physical therapy, vision impaired, deaf and hard-of-hearing, and classes on our campuses for those classes. Now, some classes would require substantial retrofitting or multiple rooms for a small group due to the needs. Space, not all campuses have, I might add. I see one or two classrooms, she said, available at some elementary sites, but she seriously doubts our middle and high schools have the extra rooms for that without hauling in a bunch of temporary buildings and trailers, and that's also a tedious process. Another secondary and elementary school teacher also wrote, so we have a little bit of time. She basically said, "Our district does not have the capacity to become its own SLPA. We need the resources provided by West End SLPA." So I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Gallagher, followed by Courtney Bogel, followed by Rita Louf.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Enfield's staff, and concerned citizens. My name is Kathy Gallagher. I have worked with students and children for over 50 years. Thirty-six of those years as a professional special education speech-language pathologist in the Rowland School District. I'm here to discuss Mrs. Shaw's recommendations to oppose the extension of the moratorium. First of all, I'm here to say that we are here to support and provide the best education and services for all of our regular ed students and our special ed students. So I'm not here to knock anything down. I'm here to just ask some questions and give my input as a person who's been in the field for a long time. The Special Ed IDEA requires, is the Individuals with Disability Education Act, requires all students with disabilities to be given FAP, and that's a free and appropriate education. There are 13 IDEA disability categories, and some of these include autism, learning disabled, intellectual disability, deaf hard-of-hearing, blind, visually impaired, emotionally disturbed, and your designated instructional services such as speech and visually impaired and RSP. In order to create a single district SLPA, it will require a lot of energy, time, research, planning, and considerations for funding availability and resources. It must also be a process that involves numerous team members, including a SLPA director, program specialists, regular and special ed teachers, designated instructional services, speech, hard-of-hearing, visually impaired, along with other team members. There are numerous pros and cons to single versus multi-district SLPAs. Pros include we have more control of special ed resources, policies, and procedures. Cons include the number of students with a disability. If you have a small amount of people with that disability, do you just mainstream them all? Or do you try to combine with another district or two to provide the best services for those people? Now, in Rowland Heights, we combine with Hacienda Heights, which the two districts are medium-sized districts, and so they're close to each other, so we can meet those needs. I don't know about eight districts or nine districts that we have in our SLPA if that is the best either. So I'm not promoting single SLPA, and I'm not promoting nine districts in a multi-SLPA. The other cons are available space, small workrooms, special ed teachers and specialists are hard to find, recruit and keep, and the cost of what single versus multi-district SLPAs are going to cost us. We agree the district needs to determine which services and programs will best meet the needs of our students. This is a process that involves many team members. I also question our motivation to hurry and oppose this moratorium extension without some research. I hope the board is transparent and keeps their constitutions, constituent form.
Courtney Bogel, followed by Rita Louf.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Enfield, Cabinet, and members of the community. My name is Courtney, and I'm a parent of an autistic kindergartner who attends the county special education program at Liberty Elementary School through the district. I'm here to share some questions and concerns that I have surrounding tonight's resolution opposing the moratorium on new single district SLPAs by two years from June 30th, 2024 to June 30th, 2026. First, where's the letter that should accompany this resolution? How can board members vote to approve something that they have not seen? The public has their opportunity to review or weigh in on what would be sent on behalf of the parents and students in this district. Second, has our district been planning to transition to a single district SLPA? This has not been shared publicly. If this is the plan, if that is the case, does our district have the resources to do this by 2024? And what will the cost be, and what are the benefits? Third, please consider other critical questions regarding the single district SLPAs. Can we afford to operate a single district program? Do we have the means to staff a single district SLPA? The district has already been struggling to staff special education positions right now. While I am not necessarily opposed to the single district program, assuming that is the end goal, I do wonder what this letter actually does to achieve that. I know that our special education students and families need more help and support, but this resolution feels performative, like an empty move to score political points with special education parents instead of real action to help special education students. Additionally, this faster timeline seems unattainable, and it concerns me that pushing this prematurely will result in a diminished services for special education students like my child. This entire resolution is lacking transparency. I'm requesting that President Shaw or any board member, for that matter, or Dr. Enfield, please provide the community with the answers to these questions and the plan to transition to a single district SLPA. I would also request this resolution be tabled until such answers are made available to the public, and most importantly, the parents and students you should be serving. I also am curious, like, how staff overturn would be because my autistic child really struggles with transitions. So if a lot of teachers and a lot of aides and speech people are all moving at once, like, that could be detrimental to a lot of students' health. So I'm curious. That was an afterthought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rita Louf.
Good evening, Rita Louf, and I am a member of the San Bernardino County Board of Education representing Area B, which is comprised of the communities of Upland, Rancho, Ontario, Montclair, and Mount Baldy. I'm here to thank the board for putting this resolution on the agenda and for opposing the moratorium. Now, I've heard the pros and cons, and this is not about the pros and cons of becoming a single district SLPA at this point. What we're talking about is local control for your board. That decision should be made by your board, not by Sacramento. This is about local control. So you can choose to become your own SLPA. You can choose to stay with the West End SLPA. I'm advocating for your right to have local control and make those decisions for yourselves. You're not getting your money's worth out of the West End SLPA. This is a myth. I've been a West End SLPA parent for over 20 years. I know them well. I see Mr. Enfield at the SLPA meetings. One of the things that I've raised, that I just heard from public comment, is that they vote on the contracts for the lawyers sight unseen. So talk about voting, at least with this resolution, we have some clear language on what it attempts to do. At the West End SLPA, the superintendents, which are unelected administrators, all of them, they vote on contracts for lawyers sight unseen with no caps. There's $3 million a year going to law firms. Those are the people that are running the SLPA. It's the lawyers. What do you think they're telling special ed teachers? Do you think they're telling them to provide reading services? Or do you think they're telling them to create litigation so they can make money? So the SLPA is not neutral. They are a special interest body run by lawyers and special interests. So you definitely need to advocate for your right for local control, for your community. I have heard the stories of the Chino Valley parents for many years. If Ontario Montclair School District can become their own SLPA and be a heck of a lot better off, then I have faith in the Chino Valley School District that you're going to be able to be just fine. The West End SLPA is a shadow agency. It's a middleman bureaucracy. And they have a budget of $200 million a year. I think you can manage your own money and do a lot better. So I encourage you to proceed. And to oppose this moratorium, I actually support part of the governor's proposal, which includes tightening restrictions on non-direct services that are currently happening at the West End SLPA via the excessive litigation to deny service.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, discussions? Mr. Bridge?
I have a couple of questions that I want to bring up on this because I know the purpose of this letter is to oppose extending the moratorium, which means we can't do anything about it till at least 2024 if it were lifted. But what other school districts are in opposition to this or have sent letters? That's one question. Have we consulted with them? How about other groups? Have we talked to staff, sped teachers, about their feelings on this issue of single versus multiple SLPAs? We heard a couple of comments tonight. Not to mention the financial implications of leaving a multi-district to form a single SLPA. Will it save more money or will it cost dollars? I'll take you back 22 years ago to 2001, when this district was in a bargaining crisis with its employees. And the school board president at that time came up with the idea of forming a single SLPA to save money to then provide, hopefully to settle an agreement. The problem with that was it found out it was going to cost more money. Also, county programs, wanted to take that over. How many county teachers were going to stick around in the district or how many were going to leave? There was a meeting over in Ontario with all the county special ed teachers in the district, and hardly anyone, in fact, I can't even remember one because I attended that meeting as a teacher in this district, but not a county teacher. How many of them would stick around in Chino or how many of them would leave? Because the county had a better salary schedule, county had a better benefit schedule. One of them asked the current Director of Human Resources, "Why should we stay in Chino?" The answer back to them was, "Because it's a great place to teach." That was the answer. Nothing else, you know, "We're going to help with programs. We're going to do whatever." That was the response. And so if something like that comes about and we take over county programs, are we going to have an employee shortage? Because those teachers likely will stay with the county. The president of the County Teachers Association told me at that time that many of her members were not going to stick around. So we have to be cautious of that. And I know we've got some time. Because if you look at the last sentence in the third paragraph on the agenda, where it says, "Extending the moratorium on forming single district SLPAs eliminates Chino Valley Unified School District's ability to determine which program serves the best needs of our students." I don't think that's the case. We can study. We can determine what, so when the moratorium is lifted, and it'll eventually be lifted, either in two years or the extension. That can be done ahead of time. This doesn't prevent, if we don't do anything or don't send a letter, it doesn't prevent us from preparing to follow through on eventually forming a single SLPA if we determine that that's the best for this district. So to me, there's too many questions, not enough answers to convince me to support this motion. You know, like, send the letter. I would, you know, go ahead, but it'll be without my vote. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz?
You know, I agree with Mr. Bridge. But, you know, over the years, there's always been problems and issues with SLPA over the years. with SELPA over the years and, and I, I, I just chew on it for years and I pay atten- there is a problem with this. And this is great, President, but we have to go further than this. And the only way we can do this is to bust the contract and see what happens. Because that's what local control is about. Because these resolutions are great, but we have to go further than that. And just the idea about Sacramento wants to extend this tells you in your mind that this ain't good. And I bet you our budget is the biggest of, of the, in school district. I would aggressively bust this thing up, make it local, have control, let the parents decide what's good for the kids. Because I believe that that's the way we could find out if it works. Because that's, that's what Congress does, right? With bills. 24 hours to read it, find out what happens. And this has been going on for years, for years with this. And I've been hearing issues with SELPA. Like I said, I, I, I always think about it, always think about, what is going on here? Bust the contract. I say that that'd be the best way to find out how good this is.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Nah?
Yes, the reason why we had decided to build a brand-new high school, a Chino High School, we had a valid reason. Before the school was built, we were spending millions of dollars. I think exact figure was about $30 million plugging in holes to fix drains, trying to fix fixtures, the water lines, for maybe 10 years. And guess what? The building was so old, it didn't really matter. It didn't really matter for the kids because there were so many problems. So one day we said, you know, we're not helping our children anymore. We're just helping those subcontractors wanting just contracts. It's an old building, they're making millions of dollars every year, but kids can't see it, the staffs cannot see it, the teachers cannot see it. So we said enough is enough. I think this is the same story we're talking about this Western SELPA here. We have been hearing so many unjust things that's been happening to our special ed parents for many, many years. But just because you need to be in this group, you have to be in this group. It's just such a, a big plan to move to another SELPA, to do this. So they just made you scared. Same thing with that new high school. You cannot possibly build a new school. It costs $100 million. It costs $60 million. It's better to spend a couple million dollars here, a couple millions dollars here. You know what? There was misguidance. I think it's time that we need to step up and start serving our special ed population and start serving our parents. This school building or this entity itself is not for us, not even for our cabinet members. They could get jobs elsewhere. They're highly educated, they could become an engineers, doctors. Yes, I have a cabinet member who's got, a daughter just got A pluses in her first quarter. And that's why they're such a hardworking people. We're all the same people. We just wear different hats, different jobs. But we work hard and we work around our schedules because of our children. And our special parents, Misty, I, I agree with you 100%. We need to serve our 20% population. So I'm fully supporting being independent and, and have the just for our children's sake. And whether we go with another SELPA, it's like when you want to purchase a brand-new car, people would tell you, you know what? Don't buy such, such brand because it breaks down every so often and, and this is a brand that you want to buy. And we get advices. Same thing with these programs. We hear from special ed parents from different districts, different SELPA. So we need to, this is a time to venture out and, and shop and, and find the best place to park our car and start serving our children and start having our children receiving their best education ever it could be. I think this is the time. How many more years we're going to plug in? I think, what's our budget in special ed? $14 million a year? So we delay another five years or 10 years, there's $140 million went and, and there's still pain and suffering for our children and our parents. And, and all we're doing is another meeting, another fight in the courthouse? For what? Filling out these long documents? So we got that much time to waste on, on our taxpayers' money? Enough is enough, I say. So I'm going to fully support having the option to go shop around and, and look for a better plan, independent, whether it's going to be independent or another SELPA. It's about the time to change our car. Our car is broken. Everybody says that. It's broken with not just a small detail, but it's broken with transmission and an engine. So time for a new car. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nah, Mr. Monroe?
I've had an opportunity over the last month to meet with many parents, special education parents, teachers, faculty members. One thing that strikes me in all of those meetings is every single one of them agrees that the special education system needs to change and nobody has a solution. I'm normally, I normally don't really like sending letters because I feel like nobody cares when you write a letter. And do I really think Governor Newsom's going to look at our letter and say, well, Chino Valley doesn't like it? I have to say, I really don't. But in this case, how do you move forward in trying to decide what's best for our children when you are taking possible solutions off the table? I don't know how you come to the best solution when you limit the possibilities. And that is what he would do in signing that bill, is limit the possibilities. And this, sending a letter isn't saying we're going to do it, but sending a letter, hopefully in opposition of this, says, don't bind our hands for three and a half more years. Give us the opportunity, if we actually have the chance to sit down as a district and come up with a system that we think best serves our kids, and if that's a single SELPA, then we do it. But don't bind us that we can't if that's what best serves our kids. It doesn't say we're going to do it. So I think we all agree something needs to change and I think we start right here by sending a letter saying, don't bind our hands. Give us the freedom to choose what serves us best. And if that's a single SELPA, so be it. If that's not, so be it. But don't take possibilities away from us. So I would support it.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Cruz, you had your light on one more time?
Yeah, just real quick, President. You have the majority at this moment, so you can turn this around.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. I did listen to all your questions and I'll try to answer as many as I can. If I miss them, please send me an email or get me after the meeting. But I'm not here to do anything reckless. The children are, are why I'm doing this. I'm not doing this for anything political. I, I have no political aspirations. So when I listen to parents for the last couple of years and I hear, listen to teachers, staff, I just try to see what's going on and I see Sacramento trying to hand tie us for an additional two years and I think that's ridiculous. Maybe with the special ed committee that I have asked Dr. Enfield to work with the staff to form and those parents working on that committee, maybe we end up tying the knots between the SELPA and us and we start serving our students and great, we decide to stay with the SELPA. This is not to say that we are going to dislodge from the SELPA tomorrow. I mean, that's reckless. I'm not here to hurt any child, any parent. That would be absolutely absurd. I would never do that to us. That's like driving in a car without insurance and not having my license. It's not going to happen. I did do a lot of homework. I've talked to a lot of people who are in the field. I've even consulted with Dr. Enfield and said, if we were to dislodge from the SELPA, first of all, it wouldn't be a one-person decision, it would have to be a board majority. So just so you guys know, it wouldn't just be Sonia coming up here and saying, we're dislodging. It doesn't work that way, there's no magic wand. But I do have to say that I did find out we would have to have a plan, we would have to have a consultant, we would have to start the plan a year before we decide we're going to get out, which would be July of this year. A lot of conversation can happen. Hopefully, we have that parent committee, we have more conversations with parents, such as most of, some of you in the audience that have shared. So we make an educated, informed decision and we have things in place if we decide to, to be able to serve our students. We know it's broken right now. I've heard it, I've seen it, I've attended the SELPA meetings myself, I've talked to parents, I've talked to educators, I've talked to staff. This letter is saying, please, Sacramento, let us decide, give us local control. Just like at our school levels, we still want them to have control. They serve the community in which they're at and if we decide that we're just going to come and make all these decisions over them, that doesn't give them an opportunity to truly serve the community, right? So we're asking Sacramento, don't tie us down for two more years. Maybe we might end up loving the SELPA and working together, but why should we be forced? That's just weird to me that we're being forced for another two years in a relationship that we may not want. Let us decide that ourselves. That's all this letter is. And I will say one thing with, with trying to, you know, advocate for the last couple of years, regardless of us thinking they don't listen to letters, they do. And it does work. And calling does work. Working with your elective officials, that's why they're coming out to these meetings, their, their field reps, because they want to hear us. These field reps here are, these, this is something they can help us with, right? Because if we have our, our senators and our, you know, our, our elective officials helping us, then maybe we might have a voice. They might not make decisions that come down on us to be able to tie us into something that doesn't serve our students. Chino Valley is unique, we have amazing students, we have amazing teachers. This, all this is saying is that we want to be able to make that decision, not them. And I did bring the letter and I did have it written up and I worked with Dr. Enfield and our staff to have that letter. So I, I will read it out loud so you guys are all aware and there's transparency. And if anybody wants a copy, I would love to give it to them. It has it, I have to make sure that it, you know, it has to be approved and everything before, but it addresses our governor, Dear Governor Newsom, the Chino Valley Unified District very much appreciates the governor's proposal as summarized on page 22 of the summary of the governor's proposed 2023 to 2024 budget to limit the amount of funding that the SELPAs are allowed to retain for non-direct student services before allocating funds to the members of the LEAs. Parents have felt harmed by the excessive expenditures and legal fees to litigate against students with disabilities to deny them needed services. The district wholeheartedly, wholeheartedly supports restricting the use of special education dollars for services to help students rather to fund than fund lawyers. We support education and not litigation. In the spirit of local control, we urge you give the flexibility to local educational agencies to make their own decisions as whether or not to join a special education local plan area SELPA. Thus, we do not support the extension of the moratorium on the new single district SELPAs to June 30th, 2026. Sincerely, Norman Enfield, Superintendent. I will say, just to name a few districts that are single SELPAs, just so you guys know too, we have Fontana, Ontario Montclair, Irvine, L E S U S D, and then San Diego. We wouldn't do this recklessly, at least I wouldn't. I would do my homework, I would make sure, I would consult with everybody before I decided to, to dislodge from the SELPA. All this is saying is, please, let us make that decision. And I think that's all I have for comments. Dr. Enfield, comments?
Yeah, I, I will make a comment on that. If, if, if the moratorium is not moved forward, just so people understand, we as a district would, would, would have to wait really until July 1st, this July 1st of 2023 to see if they are going to extend that moratorium. If they did not extend the moratorium, then we would spend the 2023-24 school year planning for what is, what our single SELPA would look like. We would have to work with the SELPA in that, in that exit plan and what services that we would be providing and how would we provide those. And then if there were services that we couldn't, we'd have to work with other agencies to see who could pick up certain services. So we have to really go through that whole year of developing that plan and then that would be submitted to the state. And we could not submit it until, because there's a current moratorium, until July 2nd of 2024. So then the state would have to take a look at our petition and if approved, then it would not take effect until the 2025-26 school year. So again, that, that gives us plenty of time to plan, to look at that, to get a plan ready, to submit it, and then another year to work on that, that exit plan from the SELPA. So just so people understand, it, it's not something that would happen overnight. It is a, a, a lengthy process.
Thank you, Dr. Enfield. Okay, I guess we'll move on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm a aye. All opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? So the motion passes with a vote of four to one. That concludes the action item. We are now on to consent. Pat, are there any speakers on consent items? Board members, do you have any polls? Mr. Bridge?
No polls.
Mr. Cruz?
No polls.
Mr. Monroe?
No polls.
Mr. Nah?
I have no polls.
And I have no polls for the remain, well, for the consent items. May I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None? The motion passes with a vote of five to zero. We are now on to information items. Are there any speakers, comments, question, or any speakers, Pat?
None.
Any comments, questions from the board? And we are now at communications. Mr. Bridge?
Thank you, President Shaw. Just a, a few items tonight. First, congratulations to Hidden Trails on their distinguished school award. I apologize for overlooking that at the last meeting, but I think it's a tremendous honor. I had a chance to be at the, at the opening of the Mandarin Program, Dual Immersion Program and it's a terrific school, well-deserved award. My only sadness is that they're receiving the award in Anaheim on the night that we have a school board meeting, so we won't be able to, to attend. Winter sports season is in full swing as the, and as the playoffs approach. I had the chance to attend two basketball games, first one at Chino High, Don Lugo, at, at Don Lugo. And it was nice to see a crowd for that. Also, I do have one thing, Dr. Enfield, on after the game in walking out to the parking lot, and maybe it shows my age or maybe the fact that I, that I broke my kneecap 12 years ago. I, walking out to the parking lot, the parking lot is well-lit, but the area from the gym down the driveway to the fence is pretty dark. And I would hate to see someone who's not familiar with that, with that campus to step off the curb wrong or, or somehow, I, I'm just, I'm just kind of looking ahead. I guess maybe I'm self-conscious on things like that, but I wonder if there's a way we can get, at least for night games, to get a better lit area from the gymnasium to at least the fence out to the, the student parking lot. Then this week I was at Yalla High for the Claremont basketball game and, and it was nice to see Yalla do very well, winning that game. And it was on seniors' night, recognizing their, their seniors. Yesterday was the signing day for college letters of intent for our high school graduating athletes. There's a lot from our schools that, that signed letters, too numerous to mention, but if you would like to see the, the names, today's Daily Bolton in the sports section has a list of not only our schools, but the other schools in the area. And I'm thinking Josh Thompson and the Chino Valley Champion will probably have the list in Saturday's paper as well. But congratulations to those students that signed letters of intent to further not only their athletic career, but also in college coursework as well. Lastly, and probably I think most important, I had the chance to attend two events in our district last week, last Wednesday on the 25th, the- Uh, last Wednesday on the 25th, the, uh, District Science Fair Awards Program at Woodcrest Junior High. Many terrific projects were on display. Uh, also, I, it was nice to see that the, uh, uh, the county and even our district gives the students the option of going digital and putting their projects on, on computer. And in fact, I want to congratulate all of the award winners and wish them good luck in the county competition, which does require that it be all digital when they get to that. Special thanks to cattle principal Steve Bus and also Tracy Bus and Curtis Summers for organizing a, a great event that evening. And then, uh, finally, on Thursday, uh, last week, I attended the Alternative Education Center, uh, 2023 Graduation Celebration, where we had 12 graduates were recognized and honored as the class of 23. And, uh, special thanks there to Dr. Preston Carr, Director of the Alternative Education Center, and the, uh, teachers and staff for a wonderful program. And with that, that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridge. Mr. Nah?
Uh, I'd like to thank Pastor Zhao for coming to our board meeting for the first time. I know my wife, uh, Jenny Zhao, you've been here quite a few times. But, uh, thank you for coming, and you'd be always welcome to join us and share your wisdom. Thank you. And, 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 uh, and, um, please pray for all of our students in the district. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Richard Wells for inviting me and other board members to a school safety presentation that was held at, uh, Ayala High School. It was a great, uh, event. We had many parents attending. And our district staff, including Andy, uh, our communication director, did a great job. Chino PD and Seminole County Sheriff's had shared very important information with our parents. And particularly about, uh, bullying and, and danger about today's social media. And, um, I think, I was thinking, yeah, that night, instead of televising or YouTubing our boring board meetings, I think we should consider, uh, maybe, uh, doing those events and, and have it televised or YouTube so that more parents could watch it at their home, because those information could be very, very vital. And, and it directly affects the safety of our, our students at home and also on campus. I think that'd be a, uh, item that maybe we could consider. Dr. Enfield?
Yeah, we can look into that.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you. So, um, after that, uh, I was able to talk to, uh, some of the students that we have attended AP class presentations in high schools. And guess what? Most of high schools, their parking lots are full. And that tells me how serious our teenagers are. Oops, it's not working. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah. So the most parking lots are full in the high schools, um, when they're doing AP class presentations. And it had shown to me how serious today's teenagers are. It's not just us adults that, who has to worry about dozen eggs for $10 in the market. Uh, they're feeling it. Uh, the, our future is what it used to be that, that we had, uh, lived. But future could be somewhat very uncertain. We have high inflation factors going on. We have uncertain economy. And there are some studies have done that if your annual salary is $100,000, you could still be leaving a monthly basis, check by check. So I think our today's childrens are more motivated, self-motivated, thank God for that, to push themselves to go get a higher education or, or be in a right, a technological field to receive a good career education. And, and it's been shown on these high school campuses. The, the parking lots were full with high school kids wanting to see what type of AP classes that they could take. So the things are changing. And as we have lost, last good two, three years of the pandemics, it is us to make sure that our kids are encouraged and be prepared to be caught up in their education the last two, three years. And also, they need to now move forward for next 10 years to catch up with other things that could happen in the future. So we're in a very critical, uh, junction to push even our limits to provide the best education for our children. I'd like to thank our great teachers in, at Chino Valley, because I have met many, uh, graduated students who are attending very good schools right now. Some are in East Coast, and many are at, in UCLA and many UC systems. And, and they are doing extremely well. And I'd like to really give that kudos for our school staffs, teachers, and all the members in the school district. Not only they're working for their own children, but they're working for our children as well. So I'd like to thank them. And again, people have different perspectives. People would have different thoughts and knowledge and feelings too. If our staffs could provide a customer service that, that suits our stakeholders pertaining to our, our parents, especially our parents, I think it's very important, because we need to partner with the parents to run the schools. If we don't have a partner, then we have to run alone. That's going to be a very lonely traveling. It's always good to have a good partners. So I always appreciate all of our parents' inputs, whether I agree or disagree. I just like to thank you guys for coming to our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nah? Mr. Cruz?
Well, thank you, Ms., uh, Misty. You're always thoughtful. You always have a lot of meaning behind what you say. Thank you very much. Thank you, Pastor, and Ms. Louf as well. You know, I also attended the police, um, what was that called?
The safety.
The safety. Let me tell you about this thing here. Real honest. We wouldn't give our child fentanyl or drugs, but we would give this. And let me tell you, this is really bad. I think in the future, this has done more damage to our children than we can possibly imagine. And, um, something that's so hard enough because it's so embedded in our children's lives, but, um, this thing is super bad. Just, I think all of us know that too. And you guys over there, you know, you know what? I'm impressed. You know, um, the whole nation, um, during the pandemic, there has been a 20% drop in academics. Very going back, back in years and years. And the recovery, who knows what the recovery is going to be. But here at this district, we are an exception, that the ELA was plus one. We improved than before the pandemic. And yes, for the math, it was negative one. However, compared to other school districts, we are the exception, that we, we, we did things that really helped. A, a number of things, starting school early, you know, having online, at the same time, having people come to school and all that, the alternative stuff. And maybe perhaps that 30 minutes maybe. But it was quite impressive. And also the parents too, that supported that. Because a lot of the nation, I mean, they got screwed up with this two years. So obviously, the teachers and the standards, whatever, the, the construction, because obviously, we all had to buy into it. So we have to thank the staff, the teachers. It, it was quite, it is amazing, when you think about it. It really is. I attended the science fair. Um, I, there was a fourth grade, um, uh, it just caught my interest. The title of this project is What's Blocking Wi-Fi? And the hypothesis was denser materials will slow the download more speed. And, and based on the conclusion, it was more than just the dense of the material. It was also the number of devices. So I, I thought it was so cool, because I, I enjoy this kind of stuff. And, you know, I have, I have my, my, my Wi-Fi meter. And so from time to time, I use it. And I, I just share this with you. You know, if you put this in your, if you have a Tesla, it's super bad. I mean, you're, you're just caged up with EMF, up the ying yang. So I just want to share that with you. And in terms of the fun, I just want to put it in because there's some stuff. But the distance, you have to be this far for it to be like five or 10. So you know, when you're sleeping, don't have it really close to you. Just push it away from you, because about this distance, you're actually good. But if you're like this, you're dealing like 300. Let me, I, I can't say these units, but you're dealing, and have it in your pocket. You know, it's not a good thing, okay? But as for Tesla, man, this is hardcore. Just to share that with you. I was, I was surprised. So, so with this experiment, it, it expanded my thought. So I was really impressed, a fourth grader. And so it was, it was, it was wonderful seeing this. It was wonderful. Oh, yes. And I attended the graduation. And I, they're great kids, and, um, I'm so proud, because it was the first one, right? It's been a while we had graduation there.
Yeah, for the, the program over there, you see, absolutely. Been a while since we had that in person.
It was good. Awesome. Yeah, so let me take off my jacket. I thought, I had, I have a wonderful idea. I'm going to start doing it. Actually, I enjoy it. Cruz, why are you doing this? In my heart. In my heart, author Joe Whitick. I love this book simply and charming. There is a cutout of a heart on each page. It's about all things that encompass your heart, like being brave and courage. My heart is full of feelings, big feelings, and small feelings, and loud feelings, and quiet feelings. Quick feelings and slow feelings. My heart is like a house with all these feelings living inside. But other times, my heart is, is cool. I bob along gently like a balloon on a stream. My heart feels lazy and slow, as quiet as snowfall. This is when my heart is calm. Dr. Enfield? I'm going to donate this to cattle.
Okay, very nice.
So I'm going to start doing that. I think that was a great idea, what you did. And, and I will donate elementary books, things that catch my attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's get, let's get rolling with this now. You know, I'm going to first say this, and I'll try to be as quick as possible, but these things do mean something, because you'll notice that it's breaking out. And I just want to say, non-self versus self. If you have a cell machinery making something that is non-self, you could imagine inflammation, a, a, um, an attack. Because your cells are not supposed to make something that is non-self, and that is the spike protein. And maybe that is the problem. That, maybe that is the problem where people are having heart issues, maybe the problem with your brain, your liver. Because some of this stuff gets lodged into your organs and your tissue, and you start getting inflammation. Because the body only recognizes self, and anything that's non-self starts attacking it. So I'm going to start listing things that, the past week, things that I've been hearing. Director of CDC Vaccine Task Force admitted C19 vaccines are causing debilitating illness. Top insurance Josh Sterling recognized MIT analyzed fine seven increase aggregate mortality for each C19 dose received. The more doses you get, the more deaths you get. If you're over 50, it's 35%. Insurance companies, they also see the same thing, one particularly, 40% that were before the pre-pandemic. The German government bombshell alarming numbers of vaccines are developing AIDS. Thailand Princess, 44 years old, remained unconscious more than three weeks after collapsing due to heart problems. She collapsed 23 days after she received her booster. This may be the first country that will declare, no, avoid the pharmaceutical company, the, the contracts they have. FEA changed the PA range. Normally was point 12 to point 2, now it's point 12, point 3. EKG is the reading of your heart rate. So they're changing it. Why? I don't know why. Despite proteins associated with COVID-19 virus, mRNA vaccines could be causing accelerated degradation of cells in the human body, causing organs to biologically age more rapidly. Clinical research in cardiology, University of Pathology has got a hold of 25 bodies. Five out of 25 of those died of myocardial inflammation after taking the vaccine. That's 20% death rate. Circulating spike protein discovered in blood of children and young adults with vaccine-induced myocarditis. Journal of American Heart Association, 100 to 436 billion copies of spike protein circling freely in the plasma. You know, you know, I feel it's important that I start doing this to, in order to wake up, because it, it just, we have a moral burden to bear, to protect our kids. At least, we have to try. And, um, I mean, that matters a lot. And I'm going to be real blunt right now. I'm going to be real blunt. Where's that? Where's that paper? Because I'm, I'm going to say something that's on my mind, and I have to say, I have to say it. Hold on. Oh, my gosh. Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I have to say this, okay? Because in this mind, I have always thought of this, okay? You've taken what it is, but I have to tell you. You know, when I think of climate change, you got to think of death. You got to think of depopulation, that the mRNA is actually depopulation. That this war we have in Russia, it is World War III. It is a form of depopulation. Okay? Many of the food processing centers, even the chicken hen that burned about, about a week ago, where 100,000 chickens have died. And knowing that, that they may be tampering with the feed, the price of eggs. I mean, when, when you're decreasing nutritional value, you're also killing people. Inflation, poor nutrition, same thing. Energy prices. When senior citizens cannot warm up their homes, what do you think is going to happen? The potential grid collapse, they're always talking about that now. And, and, and the division of our nation. And at the same time, what they're doing to our kids, so they won't have children in the future, is, you know, a serious country should be telling their children that they're born with the wrong gender. It is unheard of. But yet, it's been going on for the past three years. And there's a gender affirmative carry. It is physical abuse. When you connect the dots, you see what they're doing. They are killing us. And I feel like we don't have time. We have to wake up and change this direction, because it's, it's out, you can just see the pattern. So that's what I want to share. And the more I, the more I feel to tell you, I will tell you. So I have two ears here, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Monroe?
I had some comments, but in the interest of time, I'm going to say I donated my time to Mr. Cruz, and I'm going to forego my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Dr. Enfield?
Yeah, just one comment. I, I want to, um, thank our parents and community members who volunteered to be on the boundary committee at Calero Preserve, that new boundary. Uh, that's not a committee that I think many people, uh, jump up and down to be on. So, uh, again, I appreciate that they volunteered to be on that. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Enfield, and I will try to make it short and sweet. Before, um, Before I get to an action item that I want, I just want to thank you, everybody, for coming out and voicing your concerns, and also to our three cute little students that came and spoke, that was just precious. So I thank them, even though they left, because I know it's probably their bedtime now. Dr. Enfield, is there a way that I can initiate an action item to have our new court over that's being built over at Chino High, or to be able to name after two of our coaches that have done tremendous things? That is Mr. Frank Elder and Mr. Joe Marillo?
Yeah, I'll work with Mr. Stichur and go through the process through our board policy.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And then I just want to say, I appreciate Calero, Butterfield, and Chino Hills High for opening their hearts and their arms and giving us, Dr. Enfield and I, a great tour. I was able to see firsthand how awesome it was that the kids were able to go up to their principals. I always think that's important, because, you know, they're the principals, they respect the authority, but just to see the relationship those principals have with the students and see how comfortable the students are to ask for help when in need, I think that is, as a parent, that was just a tremendous thing. So I really want to thank them for allowing us to come and visit. I know it's hard and it interrupts their days, but I hope that these visits that we continue to do just only help link us all together. I was able to attend with, I actually saw Mr. Monroe over there, the career fair for our students with special needs today. I think that was a great, I was blown away when I walked in. I even took my younger daughter with me, because she got out early. That was awesome. I really, the more that these, you know, that you go and visit these things, it just reminds me how great Chino Valley has been since I was younger. I was able to go to the County of San Bernardino Superintendent's Awards. He honored our ROP program over at Ayala with Michael and Dr. Yarboy, and it was just, it was a fun night. The drive, I wasn't looking forward to, because I don't like driving at night, but it was really cool to see them honored and everybody appreciating them and asking them questions about the program. And then also listening to the other programs that the other districts did, I think that is a great thing, because we were able to kind of say, hey, we like that, too. The science fair, I want to congratulate all of our scientists, and also for our alternative ed graduates, congratulations, you guys did amazing. And Dr. Carr over there, that was a great service for them. I'm glad that we're able to send that letter. I also attended the school safety presentation. If you guys can attend one of those throughout, you know, sometime hopefully soon when they do have them, I highly recommend it. I learned a lot of things sitting there and listening to our officers and their presentations. I also want to congratulate Hidden Trails, and I will look into with you about our TK and Mandarin programs as well. I think that's all I have. I probably had more, but I want to make sure everybody gets out of here at a decent time. I thank you all for coming again, and I now adjourn the regular.